Day, September the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty P. M. We'll have the pledge by our planning director, Mr. Scott Angerson, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Jackson of Ward Two. Please silence all your electronic devices and please stand.
And we bow before you, now we give you honor, praise, and glory, Lord. We thank you for your presence in our lives, God. We thank you that your Son, Jesus Christ, will never leave us nor forsake us, God. We ask that you are here with us tonight, Councilor, as they attend the city business, give them unity, Lord, and most of all, we thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, and his sacrifice on Calvary's cross for our sins. We ask all this in his name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman Jackson, and thank you, Mr. Angerson. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Yancey?
Yes, Mayor, I need to add consent agenda items twelve and thirteen to the consent agenda. Authorization to require and accept advisement for the animal shelter in the water main. It should all be at your seats. And I think we have an addition to the presentation.
That is correct. Ms. Graham is here with SBA, and she wanted to speak very briefly, so we will add her behind the swearing-in of the youth council. That's Sally Graham with Small Business Association. Any other additions or changes? Do we have a motion with the changes?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Councilman Gillett is participating by phone, and Councilman Anderson also. Both of them are having some medical stuff go on, so that's why they're not with us this evening. That brings us to our announcements by our city manager, Ms. Yancey.
The Gochay Thursday will be September twenty-eighth, starting at eleven A. M. at the former St. Andrew's Mall property. City of Gochay's thirty-third annual decades event will be held October first, twenty twenty-three, starting at twelve P. M. at the former St. Andrew's Mall property, followed by a drive-in movie featuring Smokey and the Bandit at five-thirty. Outdoor movie night featuring League of Super Pets will be Friday, October thirteenth, starting at six thirty P. M. at the Gochay Sportsplex. City of Gochay's thirty-third annual Gochay Mullet and Music Festival will be Saturday, October twenty-first, from nine A. M. until six P. M. at the former St. Andrew's Mall.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. That brings us to our presentation agenda. We have, number one, is our youth council swearing-in ceremony. We want to thank all of the parents that are here and grandparents, aunts, uncles, everybody here to support our youth, and we have a great youth council this term and year. And we just look forward to what all they have planned or want to do in the city of Gochay to promote our city in a positive way. And the city manager will swear y'all in. Mayor will call your name. When I call your name, if you just come stand up front here, and Ms. Yancey will swear you all in at one time. Charlie Bernhardt, Carrington Borden, Carlos Cannon, Marissa Cernas. Did I say it right? Marissa. Navea Coe, Perron Diaz, Jules Dickerson, Kai Asia Freitman, Avery Leggett, Jada Johnson, Aiden Nguyen, Ethan Nguyen, Autumn Nixon, Madison Parker, Jayden Perkins, Maya Peterson. Also might be the valedictorian.
You can come down here. Come on.
We, Daniel Pickens, Brooke Roberts, Madison Smith, and Tanya Villa.
Okay. Raise your white hand if you actually may please. I and state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully support
And I will faithfully support
the mission of the Gochay Mayor's Youth Council.
The mission of the Gochay Mayor's Youth Council.
That I will strive to be a leader
And I will strive to be a leader
among Gochay youth.
Among Gochay youth.
That I will conduct myself in a way
That I will conduct myself in a way
that reflects positively upon
That reflects positively upon
the city of Gochay.
The city of Gochay.
That I will obey the ordinances
And I will obey the ordinances
of the city of Gochay.
Of the city of Gochay.
That I am not disqualified
That I am not disqualified
from holding opposition
From holding opposition
on the Gochay Mayor's Youth Council.
On the Gochay Mayor's Youth Council.
And that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully
discharge the duties of the office
Discharge the duties of the office
upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, John.
I would want to place the fifth.
Sam, can we get on? We'll have to get some of them, yeah. Yeah. The tall ones on the back, y'all, and the shorter ones in front. Councilman Elvin. Councilman George. Maya, can y'all see Maya over there? Or she, okay. Thank you. Everybody.
Okay.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna call your names, you get your oath, and then you can go to your seat, okay?
And y'all don't forget to sign your oath when y'all get it, okay? Take it home and sign it.
Charlie Bernhardt, Carrington Borden, Carlos Cannon, hi, sorry. Marissa Cernas, Isaiel Paul, Perron Diaz, Jules Dickerson, Kai Asia Freitman. She's right here. Okay. Avery Leggett, Jada Johnson, Aiden Nguyen, Ethan Nguyen, Autumn Nixon, Madison Parker, Jayden Perkins, Maya Peterson, Daniel Pickens, Brooke Roberts, Madison Smith, and Tanya Villa.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. And once again, just thank you all for wanting to serve your community, and hopefully y'all will all stay tonight's meeting short. So you have to stay for two. You'll get one out of the way tonight. So I encourage you all to stay the night if you can. That brings us to Ms. Sally Graham, if you'll come to the front with the Small Business Administration.
Thank you very much. I give my pleasure to the Gochay City Council. I am here from the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience to let y'all know what is available for small businesses and private nonprofits as part of the declaration, that's the Jackson County Declaration, due to the tornado in Moss Point. The economic injury disaster loan is available to small businesses and private nonprofits, and that's for loss of revenue. Sometimes businesses or nonprofits don't see that loss of revenue until many months after a disaster. The deadline is not until May of twenty twenty-four. So speaking to city councils is a very good way to get the information out to your citizens of Gochay, because that's what's available to small businesses and private nonprofits. I've also spoken with Mayor Vaughn, and I believe that there will be an event for that small businesses and private nonprofits will be invited, so that we can talk more in depth with how it is available. And the incentives for it, which is automatic, twelve months, no payment, no interest accruing, no fee to apply. And if anyone has any questions and wants one-on-one assistance, our SBA Business Recovery Center is open and open on Friday, eight to five P. M. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Graham, for coming, and we appreciate your hard work and dedication to help not only Moss Point, who actually had the storm, but all of the surrounding areas that are eligible to benefit from the programs due to the vicinity we're in. So, thank you.
Economic injury is serious, it's important, and that's one way that SBA helps the communities recover as well. Physical damage is not a requirement to comply.
Thank you. That brings us to our business agenda. Business agenda item number one is resolution amending the city of Gochay's FY twenty twenty-four comprehensive fee schedule by our city clerk, Ms. Teresa Montgomery.
This resolution is simply to update the comprehensive fee schedule to reflect the utility rights that were discussed and on which the FY twenty twenty-four enterprise budget is funded. So, this is it.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item one? Come to the podiums, take your first and last name, and you have three minutes. Councilman College, when it gets to one minute left, we'll hold up this nice number one.
John Adams, twenty-four twelve, fund and drive. The only thing I have is a couple of errors in that comprehensive fee schedule.
Yes, there is. I noticed that, I didn't know she was gonna attach the comprehensive fee schedule to the resolution. My intent was to amend it later, but she kind of went ahead and did it, and she made an error on the wastewater fees. The minimum should be twenty-ten, and she did not did it.
Yeah, because that was in your briefing, it didn't show up on there.
Yeah, I'm already learning.
In the fee schedule, it doesn't show up in that fee schedule, it's a red line.
Thank you, Mr. John. Any other public comments? Do we have a motion by council approving the resolution amending the city of Gochay's FY twenty twenty-four comprehensive fee schedule?
So moved with the amended fee schedule adjusting the suitor.
We got a motion by Councilman College? Do we have a second? By Councilman Jackson, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Gillett?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Jackson, all in favor? Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Receive and accept audited financial statements for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and authorization to publish same by our city manager, Ms. Yancey.
Yes, this is our audit for year ending twenty twenty-two. You should be very proud. We have no findings whatsoever, another clean audit, largely due to all of our employees and directors making sure they did things right. So, it's a good audit.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Do we have any public comments on the audit? Business agenda item number two. Do we have a motion by council to receive and accept the audited financial statements for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and authorization to publish a synopsis of same?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman College?
Just to echo, great job, staff. It's wonderful to have these audits with no dings or concerns or anything whatsoever. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gillett?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
I just want to echo what the city manager said and Councilman College. I just thank the city manager, the city staff, and the auditors. When I was first elected councilman, we continued to have audits that had a deficiency on it because of our assets, and it is finally, a couple of years ago, we got it resolved thanks to Ms. Yancey and the staff, and it is good to know that you live in a city that has a hundred percent clear audit. Our citizens should be proud of it, our employees should be proud of it, and I know we are proud of it. So, thank all of you. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three. Resolution approving the final budget amendments for FY twenty twenty-three by our city clerk, Ms. Montgomery.
These are just end-of-the-year cleanup, to make sure there are no overruns in some of the individual departments. The only amendment of any note is the last one, which is the amendment of the revenue for the inclusion of playground. I did not include that, and the last set of amendments due to some miscommunication on how it would be funded. So, the funding is coming straight to us, so I'm taking off of those.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion by council to approve the resolution, the final budget amendments for FY twenty twenty-three, as presented by the city clerk?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Gillett?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
Teresa, once again, we appreciate you and all this staff for y'all's hard work. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four. Approve the FY twenty twenty-four commercial insurance renewals by our city clerk, Ms. Montgomery.
This is always part of our budget process. It's probably the worst part of the budget process. If you rate the memo, it went up again, one hundred and two thousand dollars this year. Compared with the increase last year, that's one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in premiums in two years. It went across the board, property and liability. But this was the best numbers that we could give, so it is what it is.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council to approve the renewal of commercial insurance policies through Hub International for property casualty and liability insurance coverage for FY twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Gillett?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George? Teresa, good job in insurance. As we know, our, hopefully, our federal delegation is working on some relief for us. That's what we got to keep hoping and praying for and stay on them. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five. Approval to enter into a negotiated contract with an operation, maintenance, and management of the Department of Public Works Provider by our city manager, Ms. Yancey.
Yes, Mayor, if you will call, we went out for RFPs as required by law. We got two responses. One was from Clearwater Solutions, one was from H2O. The committee interviewed and talked to both of them. The council selected H2O to negotiate a contract with. During the RFP process, the contract was drafted and attached to the RFP. We went through the contract and made a few changes that made it the way we want it today, and all items were agreed on.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Any public comments? Do we have a motion by council, approval to enter into a negotiated contract with an operation, maintenance, and management of Department of Public Works Service Provider with H2O?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
I just pray one day, I fought tooth and nail against privatizing to begin with, and I just pray one day it might come to a realization that we may be able to take over our public works. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gillett?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, I agree with Councilman College at large that one day we step away from privatizing, go into taking care of business for our city and for ourselves. But I do have one question in reference to this. So, we negotiated with the H2O. Are we going into a negotiation to renegotiate with Clearwater, or this is the final finale?
No, sir, this is the final finale. So what happened was, the committee, during the interview process, everybody, each one knew what the others bid, we read them aloud, covered. So we met with each of them, we asked them questions, we told them kind of what direction we were looking on going, we gave them the opportunity to submit pricing reductions, pricing options, that sort of thing. H2O was substantially lower than Clearwater, about nine hundred thousand dollars. The contract was attached to the RFP, so it was already drafted. We did change a couple of things, because the city is providing the equipment, so we had to kind of rework some of it to make that very clear. But other than that, H2O agreed to hold their price for the five years as the RFP required, and all other items were agreed upon, so they basically agreed to the contract they submitted.
Okay, so Clearwater did not agree to the contract that you submitted?
You did not select Clearwater with which to negotiate with. Clearwater was higher by about nine hundred thousand dollars for us providing the equipment. So based on price, physical responsibility, et cetera, we chose to negotiate with that option.
All right, no other questions.
Councilman George? We have a motion by Councilman College, a second. First, I just want to thank Ms. Yancey and the staff, they did, you know, and I echo what Councilman College and Councilman Jackson says. You know, privatization, I was not elected when we privatized, and I stood up at a podium. The podium at that time was behind where our city attorney is, and I stood up and opposed it. I'm not a big fan of privatizing everything, but some stuff you do need to hire other companies to do that you might not be able to do, or they might could do it cheaper for you or more sufficient. So, there's a pro and a con to the situation. So, I totally echo what Councilman College and Councilman Jackson says, but I also know that H2O works with cities, and they don't. Sometimes we have part and they have part, so they're a company that works with you on that, and I think our city manager and our city staff did a great job working and trying to get us a new contract that has some teeth, I would say, in it, so you can hold people accountable
Yes, a much better contract.
to get work and things completed. So I think hopefully we will see some change, and I thank the city staff for their hard work. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Anderson?
No.
Councilman Gillett?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I oppose.
You opposed two, Councilmember? Two opposed, five ayes. Ms. Montgomery, did you get that? That brings us to business agenda item number six. Approval of the docket of claims by our city clerk, she's already provided them to us in our packet, it was online for the citizens to see, attached to the agenda. So that is the presentation. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number six? Do we have a motion to approve the docket of claims?
I'll make a motion, we approve the docket of claims, plotted that all entries there on are true, correct, properly answered, and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Gillett?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George? We got a motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries.
Aye.
Councilman Gillett? Okay, motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda, we approve them in one motion unless somebody a board member wants to pull one. Does anybody want to pull one? There you are. Approval of one, approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting held September the fifth, twenty twenty-three. Two, receive August twenty twenty-three privilege license report. Three, request to waive rental fees at George Martin City Park Pavilion A for United Methodist Church of Gochay's Bark in the Park and Blessing of the Pets event. Four, approval of a request from Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College for the use of four portable lights. Five, approval to waive the rental fee in the amount of forty dollars for the use of Pavilion A at George Martin City Park for at George Martin City Park for Singin' River Academy. Six, authorization to remove broken office furniture and equipment from the city of Gojase inventory. Seven, authorization to enter into an encroachment agreement with Cooperative Energy. Seven, author, eight, approval of playground development agreement. Nine, approval of a contract agreement with Pyro Shows. Ten, authorization to purchase a K-9 for law enforcement purposes. Eleven, authorization to approve change order number three, summary for the Gojase-Van Cleve Road Wastewater System Upgrades Project, Go Mesa. Twelve, authorization to acquire and accept an easement for the Animal Shelter Water Main. And consent number thirteen, authorization to acquire and accept an easement for Animal Shelter Water Main also. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items one through thirteen?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, all in favor? Councilman Delott?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. First is citizen comments, and you have three minutes to come to the front and state your name and address. Councilman College is the timekeeper, and as I stated before, when you get to one minute, he will hold up this nice blue one, and then when your minute's over, he'll tell me and I will say your time's up and you go sit down. If you don't, we will gavel you to sit down. Did anybody who wanted to speak in public comments sign in the back when you walked in? If you didn't, raise your hand now so I can add you. Richard L. Jackson.
Richard L. Jackson, or his vice president of Jackson County Branch of the NAACP. I'd just like to start out today by congratulating the young people that you have on your youth council. Future is bright. In light of that, and the fact that Councilman Anderson isn't here today, I want to refrain from making my comments today, but I want to say this to Councilman Anderson. Because you are under the weather right now, I'll come back in thirty days. Address Councilman Anderson, then if that's okay, and hopefully by then you'll have my documentation and we can carry it further. When he had his grandchildren Williams on the Fourth of July, which he confessed to, I didn't show up because I thought that was an adult, you know, situation, and we shouldn't say that in front of children. And I'm gonna do the same thing today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Billy Booth.
Billy Booth, our ward's board resident. I too am going to, going to address Councilman Anderson, and I will wait till he is here. But I will say that, he told me he was gonna call me in the last meeting, but I have not gotten the call. And there's a whole lot of other things that we can say. The issue is, we need this racial Facebook post addressed. He needs to prove that he's been hacked or he needs to resign.
Now, I asked people to print, so I cannot once again read this, so I most I'm gonna call up the phone number, but I'm not because I can read the phone number. It's Diane, maybe Richardson or Richards or?
Richards.
I'm sorry, Ms. Richards? Oh, do you want to make a, okay, well, come up here.
Make a good one, huh?
At least I could read some of it.
But, uh, my name's Diane Richards, and I live at two six one seventh Fairland Road right now in Gojase. I just want to make a positive comment about the Baycott Park and how nice it looks and makes the community look.
Thank you so much. Okay, Ms. Wally, did you not want to speak, your name's marked?
I was just saying, just slightly.
Okay, Ms. Wally, okay, okay. Mr. N'Yolande, you thought it was this side? Okay, Mr. Charles Moore?
My name is Charles Moore, and I live at nineteen twenty one State Parkway. Uh, we actually rushed to resign because he called you young people N-word done in Black Beach. He said his paper had, but he hadn't proven it. So we actually rushed to ask him to step down because he called you young people the N-word. Step down, and he.
That brings us to. That brings us to our council comments, it's the second meeting of the month, and we'll start with Councilman Melvin.
As always, I'd like to thank the employees of the city of Gojase for all the work you do. As always, we couldn't do it without you. Clearwater, I spent many years in the public safety side of things, and anytime we called Clearwater for incidents during the night, or incident, major events, storm events, they were there, working side by side. And I thank you for your service. And to H2O, I don't know you yet, but I hope I get to know you and make those same connections. And good luck to you, you got a lot going on, and good job on the audit. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Melvin. Councilman Anderson?
I'd like to thank all the city employees for all the hard work they do. I'd like to thank Clearwater for everything that they've done for us through the years. And looking forward at this point, working with H2O and hope things go as well. So that's all I got for the minute.
Councilman College?
Uh, just, weather's starting to cool down, we had this one little, I guess, false fall come through, it'll be hot again probably in two weeks. But thanks to the diligence of our city staff, recreation department, city manager, and everybody involved, we have a lot of events coming up, and I'm sure our Gojase Youth Council's gonna be involved with it also, so please try to attend as much as you can. I mean, we have the announcement, so we have Tuesday, Thursday, of course, and we got Christmas through the decades in two weeks, two Sundays. It's always a great event, it gets bigger and bigger every year. Outdoor movie nights, when we have the news, and then also the Mullet Music Festival. And there's gonna be other things coming in November and December, so just stay tuned to our city website page, Facebook page, and I look forward to all the events.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Delott?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, uh, first I want to thank you for the comment of Baycott Park. I had got phone calls about it. They, um, the children, so many children went out there, you know, supporting the park, the football, um, football teams, the PB football teams, the support that we're getting for them. And, you know, the community is embracing the fact that all the children are finally getting the opportunity to enjoy the South Side of Gojase because it wasn't always an enjoyable place, and now it is. And so people have been calling and expressing how they feel and how much they appreciate the improvements that has been done in our community and which is affecting the whole city of Gojase, which is making a big change in the whole city of Gojase. I also have, I was hoping I, the lady that came up might can explain this better, but I seen FEMA was coming through the community, so if anyone had any damage from the tornadoes that just passed through that, because they do the whole area from Jackson County, they were passing out applications, flyers and things like that, advertising to, for people to report if you had any damage. So it's the deadline on it, and I can't remember the deadline because I didn't see it on the flyer. But, you know, if you have any damage, you need to do it quick, and I also got the information. If you need this information, it's on this flyer. I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
Um, I think this is the largest mayor's youth council we've had to date, maybe. It looks like it is to me. This is one of my favorite days of the year, though, that we swear all you guys in. And I don't think you realize the impact you actually have in the community when you do take this role. You're gonna see a lot, you're gonna learn a lot. It hits close to home with me, a lot of people don't realize I started this position at twenty-three. That's not too much older than what you are now. Get ready and you can be in this seat and you can make differences. So congrats to you. Uh, Clearwater, Russell, you know, I've enjoyed working with you over the years. Consider you a friend. I've known Bobby Neesel for years and his family, great guy, and I think both are good companies. I think change can be very good and very positive. We hope for the best, so we'll see where the future goes with our new partner, working in public works. Uh, staff, you guys really, this time of year, I mean, it just kind of tears you all apart, but you hold it together gracefully and you get the job done. I mean, we have audit, budget, regular day-to-day, event planning. You've got contract negotiations, especially this year, going out for bid for public works, grant management, everything hit at the same time. At the end of every day, I feel like everybody's still positive and has a smile on their face and we take on the next day like it's nothing. Uh, so kudos to you guys, because really without you, the city would fail. But that is all I have.
Thank you, Councilman George. Go ahead, Councilman Jackson.
So yeah, um, I neglected to say, speak on the Clearwater, because they have been instrumental in my community getting things done. So I wish that they would have had the opportunity to do this again. Of course, you know, if people were wanting change, I understand it. So I just, you know, if that's what you want, that's what you want. And I did have built a relationship with Clearwater as well. Uh, they got great workers that are working for, that are from Gojase, working in our community and things like that, and we want to continue that as well. Uh, that's pretty much all I have now. Thank you for allowing me to speak again.
You're welcome, Councilman Jackson, anytime. I can echo what everybody says about, I mean, the Clearwater employees you will still see in our community. I want you all to know that. If they go through the hiring and the vested with the H2O, so don't think they're all being kicked to the curb. You will still have Clearwater employees in the city of Gojase. So to the employees of Clearwater, they're hard workers, they're dedicated, they're out there mowing the grass, they're out there in the sewage, the water main with Mayor Vine. When we don't think there's a hole in a pipe, but there is a hole in the pipe. They're out there all hours of the night to get it fixed. Water breaks due to lightning and the road crackling, and I'm out there with them, making sure if they need water, whatever. They're dedicated, some of them live in our city. If not, they live in our sister city, and most of them live in Jackson County that are employees. So the employees of Clearwater are hard workers, and I feel confident that H2O will work with them and it will be a great transition. So thanks to all the Clearwater employees for their hard work and dedication. I also want to, once again, congratulate the mayor's youth council. Most of them are in band, some are not, but they all do some extracurricular activities. And I'm so proud of each one of you, and you all know if you need something, we're only a phone call away. And be there for your other youth, but I want to thank the city manager for allowing us to have a youth council, because in our former government, the city manager runs the day-to-day operations, so she's got to authorize a city staff member to be able to be the leader and the sponsor. So I thank our city staff that are the sponsors, it's Emily, Kim, and Sam, and Brenda. They all do a fine job. This past weekend, and I was there with them, and they, all the youth had, but one, had some activity else, but we were down there working in the concession stand to raise money for them to be able to attend events. So if anybody wants to sponsor or make a donation to the mayor's youth council, you're more than welcome, they will take it. Mayor Vine just asked for all y'all, so y'all don't have to go away. But once again, I hope y'all, we are, have a wonderful year, we're gonna have some fun events, and I know you all will make Gojase shine. I also want to remind people, this coming weekend, as you know, we're getting ready, the amphitheater is ahead of schedule being built, it's something we should be proud of in the city of Gojase. You will see negative comments, but majority are positive about it. And it is something, because we need an attraction here to attract people to our beautiful city. So it is ahead of schedule, so with that being said, the Songwriters Festival is this weekend. It will kick off Thursday night in Ocean Springs at the Mary C, and then it will go throughout the weekend. We have venues here, the golf course, American Legion, Aztecas. I do not think we have another venue in Gojase hosting them. Those are the three venues in Gojase this weekend, that we'll have them on Friday and Saturday night. Um, you can go to their Facebook page or that business Facebook page, but I encourage you to go support the Songwriters. On Sunday morning at nine AM, our local church here, First United Methodist, Gojase, MJ and her congregation will host the Songwriters. They will actually have at nine AM a Songwriters service, so if you want to attend, you're more than welcome. That's right across the highway on Highway ninety, or you can tune in live on social media and watch it live. This past Saturday, we kicked off our youth football league, and the city staff always goes above and beyond. There is no doubt, it's not in their job description to work in ninety-eight degrees heat. And I repeat, ninety-eight degrees. The staff was hot, I was hot, everybody was hot, but we had a great day at Baycott Park. And to the staff, thank all of you. I know y'all were exhausted like I was when you went home, but we got some positive feedback. St. Martin, we played, we were running delayed, they were, worked with us, they were understanding. And to hear the positive of those citizens from another community brag on our facilities is just, will motivate you, it just gives me tons of energies to go out and shout what we have here in Gojase, Mississippi that we take for granted. Our youth needed the ball field, it needed to be revitalized, and I'm proud of it. But Kim's husband, our, he even said how nice it was, and he works with another city, so he bragged on it. So to know that it's being recognized, and if you've not been down there, I encourage you to go down there, because it's just a great facility, everybody behaved. We didn't have any pickups, that I'm aware. It was just a great day down at Baycott, so follow us on Facebook and go down there and support our youth because they need it. I want to thank our sponsors once again, because we couldn't do it without them and the coaches, the chair and football coaches, and the sponsors, Country Gentlemen, Opinks, Aztecas, Barnum's Drug, and Furlong Marine. So if, remember to support all of our local businesses, but definitely the ones that support our youth. We definitely need to support them. Last but not least. Social media can destruct, and I repeat, destruct. To our youth, you see it, hate. We have young people killing themselves because of people that might make a comment on social media. It is time that we all try to engage in some positivity and not let yourself get caught up in the negative. If you do not see it from the official Goche Facebook page or website, don't believe it. Don't believe all the comments you read under it. Because I'm here to tell you, I've read some stuff the past few days. I'm not even a member of the group. I get them on this phone by screenshots people texting me. And talk about the fake news. It's just totally fake. I can assure you this, the city is aware of the frustration the citizens are experiencing with Martin Bluff Road Project. I am just as frustrated. The council, the city staff, we are all just as frustrated and want it completed. And somebody to say that we don't care, or I said, the mayor said, he don't care. I care. I'm up, I drive that road every other day. I sympathize with those people. I stated that on the record. I did not say I did not care, because I do care. So for somebody to put words in my mouth or anybody's mouth from this city, it is fake news unless you hear it from the person. The project was bid, and the bid was awarded to Gulf Breeze Construction, not Gulf Breeze Landscaping. They're two different companies. So let's correct, we didn't award a bid to a landscaper, we awarded it to a contractor. Okay? The city by law is required to award the contract to the lowest bidder. Contrary to misinformation on Facebook, once again, the notice to proceed was given to the contractor on November the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. The Martin Bluff Road Project is federally funded in part through M-DOT. Therefore, the project must be bid and carried out in accordance with the M-DOT specifications and requirements. The funding is as follows. Legislative earmarks, three million eight hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. MPO, four million seven hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-eight. Four million seven hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-eight. City twenty-ten bond, one point five million. The construction contract for this project with the contractor consists of in part the specification and requirements of what is referred to as an M-DOT red book. The terms of the construction contract for this project, including the M-DOT red book, govern what is allowed, required, and what each party may or may not do. When there's a request for an amendment or a change to the contract, such request must, and I repeat must, not be, it will be approved by us, but it's got to be not only approved by the city and the contractors, but also by M-DOT. And I repeat, M-DOT has to approve. And the project engineer. Pursuant to the red book, the contracts for this project, the engineer, not the city, is the administrator of the construction contract for this project. Time limits and costs for completing the project, for an example, can only be increased when the contract provisions for it per state law and such requests are first approved of and recommended by the engineer and M-DOT. Also, when a contract is awarded for a project like this, the contractor is responsible for the project site, not the city. The contractor's responsibility include the site cleanliness, mowing, building potholes, erosion control, maintenance. Generally, the city is not allowed to perform work contracted by the contractor. The city is working diligently through its attorneys with the contractor and its cert, and to resolve all issues pertaining to the project in accordance with the contract terms and with M-DOT approval. Contrary to the rumors that you might see on social media, the funding for the M-DOT project has not, and I repeat, has not, been spent on some other project, no pet project, and is still in the bank account. Rumors that the city refuses to pay for additional work for which they are unit prices in the bid accordance with the contract documents is also not true. Again, the city is making every effort legally available to get this project completed. We, myself, the council, the city manager, the city employees, want it completed just as bad as everybody else. But I want to remind you, if you live north of the construction project, I encourage you to go frontage road. There's no reason to go through the construction site and fuss about it when you got an exit that is a clear, nice road. Secondly, if you live in that area, and you have to drive that area, I drive it every other day, I encourage you to go the posted construction speed limit. It's not as bad if we go the speed limit. But when we're driving the speed, construction speed limit, and you almost get ran over, that's not safe. So I encourage everybody to go the posted speed limit, and it won't be as rough on your vehicles. Once again, if you have any questions regarding any project in the city of Goche, you can reach out to myself or your council members, or to the city manager, or our city directors, and they will be glad to assist you. But it's the time that we go promote Goche in a positive way, because we're wanting economic development. They don't like reading all this crap that's fake news on social media, because where are they gonna say? We ain't coming there? It happens in every city, but I am your leader to encourage you to be positive. We have a lot of positive things here in Goche, Mississippi. When people say we don't have nothing for youth, the bowling alley, they're open. They stayed open late after the ballgame the other night for our youth. Aztecas stayed open so they could go socializing with their friends, because they all like chips and salsa after the game. Do y'all not? So they all, they can stay open to midnight out there now. So Aztecas has been accommodating to the youth to give them something to do after, so they can go somewhere and hang out and socialize with their friends. So we do have stuff going on in our city. We are moving forward. We have gotten a lot accomplished. And we are just, remember, a, a young city. We're not old like our sister cities. We're all youthful, and Goche is a youthful city. So be proud of what we have, be proud of our youth, be proud of our school system, our educators, and our healthcare system. And I hope you all have a blessed week, and thank you all for coming tonight. City manager, Ms. Shanks, do you have any comments to echo?
I wish I knew what pet project or where, what money we're taking, because my bank account don't show I'm taking money.
Look, I thought I'd call the state auditor today and show them that. I was, I laughed so much about it. Anyways, um, Ms. McGovern, do you have any comments?
I've been rapping solid banks, taking solid bank.
And they all balance, right? And you didn't give us any, did you? You weren't supposed to.
Y'all ain't giving nothing.
Well, Facebook seems to think we taking money, y'all. City attorney, Mr. Danos?
Yes, sir. I've requested the board to close the session until you determine whether the executive is appropriate.
Okay. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman College? Any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Gilat?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're in closed session. Can the mayor's youth council say just for a minute so we can explain this process to them? The mayor's youth council only, not the parents. We're gonna go into closed session, but I want the youth council to see the process. So I want to tell them the process.